Good evening, I want to welcome you and call to order this meeting of the Florisville ISD Board of Trustees for this date, June the 6th, 2022, at 6:30 PM. Let the record show that there is a form of board members present, myself, Joel Odom, also Mr. Jason Sivota, also Ms. Mala Reed, Mr. Steven Shadrock, and Mr. Marshall Flear. Furthermore, let me record to show that this meeting has been duly posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Let's stand together. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for all your grace and mercy that you've given us today, and Father, thank you that we've been living in that grace and mercy, and Father, we trust you for all things. And Lord, we pray tonight for our school district, we pray for our teachers and staff, and our students, Father, as they enjoy the summer, we pray, Father God, that you'll give them a safe summer. And Father, we thank you for all your blessings this year for a great school year, and Father, we know that your hand has been on this school from the very beginning, and we're grateful for that. We give you thanks and we give you praise, in Jesus' name, amen. Now we'll recite the pledges, so you'll face the flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Auto the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Mr. Flear will recite our FISD vision and mission statement.
The FISD vision statement is preparing you for a prosperous life, character, knowledge, confidence. Our mission statement is FISD is committed to developing 21st century graduates who are lifelong learners that are purposeful, innovative, collaborative, and possess character traits that lead to success.
All right, I note that Mrs. Eliana Martinez is here, also Mrs. Elena Berlenga is also here as well, and now Mrs. Berlenga, he'll recite our FISD goals.
The FISD goals are each student will maximize their potential, each student will be a lifelong learner prepared for their future, each student will be a contributing member of the global society, FISD will strive to build strong relationships with stakeholders, and FISD will exercise fiscal responsibility.
All right, now we will recite our FISD core. Our FISD core beliefs are, we believe that each individual is unique.
We believe character values are the building blocks of a prosperous life.
We believe in a strong work ethic.
We believe mutual respect is a foundation for safe and nurturing environments.
We believe that helping one another strengthens our community.
We believe education is a shared responsibility throughout the community.
We believe effective communication is vital to success.
We believe that lifelong learning cultivates personal growth.
We believe that everyone deserves access to a quality education.
We believe that in failure, there's opportunity for growth.
And Mr. Sivota will recite our overview of good governance and code of ethics.
Each month, we highlight one of our good governance indicators and code of ethics that the FISD Board of Trustees follow to promote the best interest of the district as a whole. This month, for the code of ethics, we are highlighting commitment to service. I will focus my attention on fulfilling the board's responsibilities of goal-setting, policymaking, and evaluation. I will diligently prepare for and attend board meetings. I will avoid personal involvement in activities the board has delegated to the superintendent. I will seek continuing education that will enhance my ability to fulfill my duties effectively. Our good governance indicator for this month is the board has written, has a written plan in place for regular review and adoption reaffirmation of the district's mission, vision, beliefs, and goals.
Now we have some academic all-state recognitions. Coach Roers, would you please come forward and present these students to us?
Meeting members of the school board and Dr. Gilstrap, on behalf of the athletic department, I would like to thank you guys for providing us the opportunity to present and sharing the successes of our student athletes on and off the field. With that being said, tonight, we have our last group of student athletes that we'd like to recognize and present to you, and we'll start off with Tiger baseball and Coach Ricky Salazar.
We have three kids that were nominated or got academic all-state.
Come on, Coach, y'all come up for that.
The first one I have is, he was an honorable mention, Texas High School Coaches Association All-State, Kaden Angle. Next one, he was a second-team all-state THSCA academic all-state, Sean Ashenbeck, and then the third one is Preston Freeman, which is, he's not, he's not here. We preach on, you know, being a student first before athletics, and these kids show, they come, they go to school, do their job, and do what they gotta do in order for them to be successful.
Doc Roer, if you'd like to say anything?
Yes, I want to say to these two student athletes, congratulations. You know, it's a very difficult task just to be the athlete, but to be the student in the class is so very important, and I'm so proud of you guys and love both of you and know that you've got a great future ahead of you.
Dr. Odom Javo, that way.
This one.
Yes, sir.
That's perfect.
Okay, I think we look good. And everybody is smiling. One, two, three.
There it is. Congratulations.
The next group of student athletes, if you'll come up here and stand when I call your sport, the Jaguar and Tiger powerlifting, and Coach Wendy Salazar.
Hello, good evening. So, these two individuals, Allison Machado and Zach Nelson, had extremely successful powerlifting seasons, and along with that, sorry, along with that, they also maintain GPAs of 100.0 or higher. With that, they are both recognized for, Allison, Texas High School Girls Powerlifting Association All-State All-Academic Elite Team, and with Zach, it was Texas High School Boys Association Powerlifting All-State All-Academic Elite Team. In the four years I've been here, that's a first for us. We generally won't get first-team, second-teamers, but we have not had elite team recognition at all, so this is very exciting to have. We also, two of the young ladies that are not here with us, Destiny Leandro and Lori Stark, who also received that recognition. I know these kids are gonna be missed by our teams on the girls and boys side, but I know they are also gonna do amazing things in their futures at the higher, with their higher education at the institute still be attended.
I want to congratulate y'all. It's a high honor and the first, that is just top-notch, but to know powerlifting, because I've had all kids in sports, this is something you just don't do for about a couple weeks, it's all year long. So you've had the total dedication of going in there, lifting those weights, I have no trouble with my three-pound weights, and, you know, and doing it all year long, not only with your meats, to keep up that stamina and to keep up excellent grades. Thank you very much, and I hope they can come back to the community. Thank you very much.
The next sport, the student athlete was not able to be here, but she was recognized as academic all-state, and that would be Sam Belino with the Jaguar softball team. So she would, like I said, she would not be able to be here tonight. The last group that we have for academic all-state recognitions is Jaguar Track and Tiger Track, and Coach Drew Tagg. Athletes who come up here and stand in front. Once again, thank you, board, Dr. Gilstrap, for taking the time to recognize these student athletes. If you look in front of you, and I'm gonna kind of, I'm gonna say the names of the ones who are not here, Lori Stark, who is also academic all-state for powerlifting, is not able to be here. Darian Murphy was second-team academic all-state, and Brandon Cortez was second-team all-state as well. The student athletes in front of you, we have Sidney Tally, who was honorable mention all-state, we have Nicole, you can stay back there. We have Nicole Swinson, who was honorable mention all-state, Allison Machado, another one who is also powerlifting all-state that you just got to see, Lazarus Machado, second-team all-state, Kaden Angle, who was also with baseball, second, or honorable mention all-state, and Clay Pellet. As I just said, some of these are in multiple sports, so it's a testament to those kids who are in multiple sports to be able to maintain their grade point average of what they need to be to be able to be all-state. So with these guys graduating and moving on to bigger and better things, so we expect great things from them, and I know they do as well, being able to pursue their careers and whatever it is that they choose to do, and I think they'll be successful whatever it is they do, so congratulations to them.
I congratulate y'all for y'all's effort. Track is one of those things, normally in the springtime, it's getting hot outside, there's a lot of other things to do, but for y'all students that are doing two sports, that's very commendable. And especially when you get toward the end of the, end of the school year, being able to balance both an extracurricular being sport and academics, that's quite, quite commendable. So I congratulate that to y'all. It also shows your testament and your commitment to finish strong, so thank you.
Board members, before we dismiss the others moving on in our meeting, I just want to say that throughout the year, we honor these kids and understand that what comes before you is not easy, and it's not what takes place in other districts. Whenever people represent us and they go across the state and they're competing and being recognized at the state level, these are not academic all-district, these are not kids that qualified for regionals. These are kids that we've been able to present to you all year that are at the highest level in the state, whether it's in competition or it's in academics. So kudos to our kids for their commitment, and kudos to our coaches as well for your hard work, and our sponsors, and all of the activities that we do. It's a great opportunity for our kids to go out and show what they are really and truly capable of, and as a, as a district, we're so proud of you, thank you for what you do all year long. So just wanted to say that board, it's, it's at the top level is what these kids are, they're not, they're not at the district's level, so thank y'all.
Congrats.
And thank your parents.
Yes, you can be dismissed unless you want to stay around for the excitement. It's always exciting. All right, Ms. Petrie, do we have any public comments? Next item on the agenda, our reports and updates. Time to be sure, I'll start us off with the superintendent report.
Well, board members, since our last meeting, obviously times have changed across the state of Texas and across the nation whenever it comes to schools and education. The incident that took place in Evallety two weeks ago was truly a tragedy for the district and the community, however, the ramifications are felt across the country, including here in Florisville. Our hearts go out to those families and that community and the district as they struggle through the grieving process. As a district, we've been able to provide some direct support to them through counselors, we've spent multiple, multiple counselors over there as a group around Region 20 in San Antonio. As they request, we're able to send counselors there as well as with communication support as needed. They've called on us to assist, and obviously they've had a lot of media come to their district and in their town, and so they've requested some assistance in that area too. Our community, unfortunately, we have the ability to assist in these things. We've been through our healing processes as a community with subsequent springs, and so one of the things that does come out of that is our experience, and we're able to support them as they try to begin to recover from a tragedy such as this. So I want to thank the district and the community for everything we've been able to directly do. Indirectly, we've been able to, obviously, people in our community and district have sent money and donations and all those kind of things, so we've been able to help them in both ways. The event also brings to the forefront our own safety and security plans. As a district, we have many security measures already in place, but as always, we all, we want to look at opportunities to evaluate those and to improve in order to ensure practices and routine are as consistent as possible. This summer, we will review the details of our emergency operation plan and security practices, we've already begun that process. As we, or, excuse me, as a part of that review, we need to hear from our community and our families, and so our community strategic plan meeting, which is scheduled for tomorrow, previously scheduled for tomorrow, we're gonna open that up at the beginning to just hear from our community and listen to them. It's not gonna be a presentation, it's not gonna be a question and answer, it's just gonna be a time to hear from our community and what their thoughts and their concerns are. And again, that'll be tomorrow, June, Tuesday, June the 7th. We're gonna utilize that as an opportunity to listen as a school district to what our parents, community members, staff members have to say. Should time permit, we'll extend and go into our scheduled strategic plan 2.0 conference. If not, then we'll, we'll call it quits after that. Also presenting in the board packet is your itinerary for the Summer Leadership Institute. This will be held next Thursday and Friday in San Antonio, we've made arrangements for transportation, so please let me or Alyssa know if you will not be participating in that transportation, if you want to take your own vehicle. Otherwise, we will have a ride available, and we'll take a Suburban, and we'll have a stop here and one at the, at the church on 181 Oak Hills Community Church, if you want to meet out there. Also, just a reminder that we have a board workshop on Tuesday, June 14th, at 6:30, to review the budget and strategic plan 2.0, so be, mark that on your calendar. Also, we will have a special meeting called on Monday, June 27th, at 6:30, to consider a final budget amendment for this fiscal year and also to consider approval of the '22-'23 budget. It's a pretty big meeting. The final budget amendment is necessary to ensure everything is in order prior to closing out the fiscal year, which will be audited in the fall, so that'll be audited in the fall semester. Also included in the board packet is a meeting calendar for '22-'23 per policy, we do have the meeting scheduled for the first Monday of each month. However, there are two conflicts, one is with Memorial Day, and the other is, I believe, July, or, excuse me, January 1st, and so we'll have to push those two meetings to the second, second Monday. And then also make sure, let it be known that there will be no regular board meeting in July, correct? So we will have that call meeting on June the 27th, and we will consider any action or any business at that meeting. Finally, the class of '22 graduated, so congratulations to them, we got them across the stage. I do want to thank the high school administration for their hard work in organizing that event, it went off without any major issues, which is important. Also, thank you to the board members for participating in that, and having the privilege to hand out those diplomas is really a pretty special thing, and so thank you for being able to, to attend that and get that done for us as well. This is truly, in my opinion, it is the culmination of what we do in public education. Our goal is, yes, we educate kids, but how do we show that? What's the success? The success is getting high school students. So getting them across that stage, to me, that's the biggest, that's the biggest event of the year. And then finally, also included in the packet is the contracts, teacher contracts that have been offered thus far since our last board meeting, is an update for you. Any questions? As always, let me know if you have any questions, or if you'd like to meet individually, be glad to schedule a meeting.
Okay, now Dr. Gilstrap will also present the special programs report.
Yes, the first report we're gonna have is, can you get over here to that page, is Gifted and Talented, it's Brinda Jones.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Gilstrap, my name is Brinda Jones, and I am the secondary coordinator of teaching and learning. I'm gonna review our GT program for this past year. Total members this year, we have 337 students that were our GT gifted and talented. Currently, we are at 7.87% of the whole student population. The state recommends 4% to 7% of the population be qualified as gifted and talented.
That's a target, correct?
4% to 7%, because you don't want to go too high, you need to stay within a lower percent, because those students, they kind of vary from campus to campus. So one campus might have a lower target compared to another campus, so the range is 4% to 7%. And we are, when we look at our group's bi ethnicity compared to the state recommendation, they recommend 80% of that student population be considered. So the difference for our American Indian Alaskan, we're right on target, same for our Asian students, our African American, we're down by 2, our Hispanic, we're down by 66, and our white population, we're up by 66. And two or more races is 2, we're up by 2 students. This year, we screened 134 students at South, 112 at North, for a total of 246 students of those we tested, which get referred to testing, we tested 26 at South, 30 at North, and 56 total. And our identified students for services was a total of 13 kindergarten students. Our spring referral window, so this is our window for students not necessarily in kindergarten, but first through 12th grade, they can still be referred for services. We referred, well, we tested 104, ended up COVID, meaning 19 of those students were GT qualified, and ECO DIS was 31 students. Our special educational population, there was five students, our emergent bilinguals, four students, and Bio-4 was five students. And that is it. Do you have any questions?
Couple slides back, what was the services, what was the identified for services, what is, one more forward. Right there, identified for services.
That means that they qualified.
Just to qualify.
That they, uh-huh, they hit the threshold in our scoring matrix.
So screened would be those that were considered and tested, would be those that we actually tested?
And we screen all our kinder students, currently we screen them. Next year may be a little bit different, but right now, we screen all kinder students, and based off their screening and the score, they get referred to test. So this is, yeah, our kinder screening, and so if, then they'll test, and so from that test determines if they're gonna receive GT services. Good?
Next up, we have our bilingual report from Dr. Brad Warner.
Good evening, board and Dr. Gilstrap. Dr. Warner, coordinator of bilingual ESL, daily assessments, federal programs. Today we're talking bilingual ESL. All right, so at the elementary, we offer two programs, we have our dual language, which falls under the bilingual program, and then under the English as a Second Language Program. Sometimes parents of the emergent bilingual students don't want their students in the dual language program, they want them in English classes, but just English-speaking students. At the high school, at the secondary level, 6th grade through 12th, we only offer our ESL programs there. So this year, well, this actually shows our counts as a district of our bilingual ESL. The biggest thing is that we've gone from 5% back to 2017, 18, to almost 8% this school year. So we're getting more students identified, and more students are coming to us and qualifying and getting identified as emergent bilinguals. And then you can kind of see our funds, the top three funds is the federal monies that we get for our bilingual ESL students, and that money has also been increasing, as well as our bilingual ESL allotment, which has also been increasing for that. So that money is dedicated for staff, professional development, supplies, just for the emergent bilingual students or students that participate in the dual language program. So here you can see for this year that in the bilingual program, we had a total of, remember, the bilingual program is the dual language kit, so it also includes the English proficient students that participate in the dual language program. That's the EP column. So at the elementary, at North and South together, we have 63 English proficient students and 110 emergent bilinguals that participate in our dual language program. Under the alternative bilingual program, those numbers are, we had a class, a bilingual dual language class, that did not have a bilingual certified teacher, so we had to get an exception for them, which was approved today, or Friday. For our kiddos, so from that group, we had 15 where English proficient and four were emergent bilinguals, so where our principals are working really hard on getting bilingual certified teachers who is upcoming here. In the ESL, at the elementary, the students that didn't want to participate in the dual language, we had 32 students, and then at the middle school, we had two that were in the alternative ESL program, because we had an ESL waiver, because one of the teachers that served those kids for their English language org was not ESL certified. So we're working on that scheduling as well at middle school, and so that won't happen yet. So we're working on that scheduling as well at middle school and so that won't happen yet. Parent denials, those are parents of emergent bilinguals. Parents choose not to have their students receive any services, so we cannot give them any kind of supports or accommodations or anything. And because of that, we don't receive any funding credit. So overall, we had three hundred and fourteen students this year at snapshot. And then this one is just about the program by grade level. So you can see how many are in dual language, how many are ESL. ESL has two descriptions. So one is content-based and one is pull-out. Content-based is easier at the elementary level because usually the classrooms are self-contained and as long as that teacher is ESL certified, it's considered content-based. If, at minimum, the English language arts or RLA teacher is ESL certified, then that is the pull-out, which is generally the program that we have at the secondary because it's rare to have all the contents ESL certified. But it's something I'm going to work on. Our highlights for this year, through the Estro Fund, we were able to hire a bilingual interventionist that serves both North and South and has been a big blessing. We have purchased additional Spanish resources and materials for the teachers. They've received training to improve instruction. They received coaching support, which will continue this next school year from June twenty. They've had multiple opportunities for professional development throughout the year and this summer, and we've got some lined up for the following year already, too. And then the biggest outcome is from the students that participate in the dual language program is that when they, if they've completed five or more consecutive years in the dual language program, they have the opportunity to earn a high school credit for Spanish one when they meet fifth grade. And so, you know, with all the COVID stuff, the last couple of years have been, the testing has been a little backed up, but we did test four sixth graders and they did receive their load credit. And then we also tested four out of the thirteen fifth graders that were eligible in the classroom. Four of them were eligible to take the avant testing and they received their load credit. So we have eight students in fifth and sixth grade with high school Spanish credit.
I have to say, I don't think I've ever had a high school transcript start with a fifth grade.
Some of them have the opportunity in third grade.
I know.
So we're actually going to test the, some third and fourth graders once we get back in the fall and to see if, because they did qualify to test, but it was just, scores coming in late and that kind of stuff. So we have it on the books to test them in September and we can award them credit for the twenty-two school year. So we may have third graders and fourth graders with a high school credit.
On your ESL, do all elementary teachers have to be qualified? Or just, if they, just a certain percentage?
We actually encourage all of them to be ESL certified because it really alleviates the stress of where the students can be placed if they are, choose not to be in the dual language program.
So if they're, if a student is identified, whoever their teacher is has to be ESL certified.
Right. I just didn't know, I just didn't know. Well, I know this district in San Antonio, they all have to be.
And there are some districts that, and it really makes it easy because now, whenever you get ready to schedule, you don't have to think like that.
Yeah, otherwise, you're like, oh, they can only go in this class. And then you're like, oh, but they already have this. And then you're having to move a lot of pieces. And so if all your fourth grade teachers or all your third grade teachers are ESL certified, then it just makes it a lot easier. So.
So Dr. I have a question. It, that's, I love that, it's awesome. How is their English? Is this pushed their English back being, where the Spanish is real early on?
Actually, no.
It doesn't?
Because in order for them to get that load credit, they have to take a test in both English and Spanish.
Okay.
And be proficient in both to earn the credit.
Good. Yeah, I don't want somebody falling behind or?
And then their star scores have to be meets or masters, not just approaches.
Awesome. They have to be successful in both ways. Yeah, okay.
So there's three, three parts to it.
And I will say, the position that we added with bilingual interventionist, that was really, really big.
Yep.
Those, those students and those teachers really appreciated that.
Like, what is some of the jobs, like, of the interventionists?
Of the interventionists? So how about I let the principals tell me what they, she's done at your campuses? I mean, I can tell you what the job description says, but they can tell you what she's actually done.
Well, like Dr. Warner said, she's been phenomenal. She really acts as the RTI teacher for students enrolled in dual language, but at both campuses. So she splits her time and has a schedule for how many kids she's servicing in both reading and math and small room pull-out. And then as we got closer to star testing, she also formed star groups for us based on the interim data and she tutored after school. She pushed into classrooms and worked with teachers to help, help them get their lessons together. She kind of even acted as a mentor to one of our teachers. She's been a blessing.
Yeah, I mean, and some of it, anything else you want to add? I mean, I'll just kind of come back with the mentorship that she provided, sort of our newest teachers in the dual language program, helping us get those classrooms set up. That was an idea, like, she was really there to help support our students and our staff who's servicing these unique population. And so it's been very beneficial. We've all learned so much from this program, so.
Thank you. Thank you, so. Yeah, so she's done a little bit of the interventionist and direct with the students, but she's also helped support teachers where, that's why I'm kind of like putting a little bug in the ear that I need a bilingual coach. So, any other questions? Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. The last one we have is from Career and Technical Education. Again, Mark?
Well, good evening, everyone. My pleasure of telling you a little bit about our CTE program this year and how successful we have been. Our first slide up here actually shows you the enrollment of students in CTE courses for over the past three years. And this year, we have about ninety-one percent of eligible students in CTE courses, which is right at our percentage pre-COVID years. We were at ninety-two percent prior to that and we're, we're right back up there at ninety-one percent. Something to note about our middle school, we do have eighth graders enrolled in career explorations. And with that, and, and that's all eighth graders minus the ones that are in algebra. So the cohort of students who are taking algebra don't have that, but they still are exposed to the CTE program of study when the eighth graders come over and take tours and visit and that sort of thing. They also are exposed to all of those programs of study prior to entering in their high school enrollment. The next slide is in regards to our CTE auto coding designations. So in the year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, TEA began auto coding our students based upon their course completion of level one, level two, level three, and level four CTE courses. And so the first set of data was actually provided us after last year's summer P E submission. But I also have for you the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two preliminary data. We finalized after this summer's P E submission. And so basically, what we are looking at specifically is we have a large number of students who are actually concentrators. So those are students who have completed two or more courses or at least two credits within a program of study. There is some overlap in between the students that are coded as concentrators and completers because with our five by five schedule, it actually allows students to take and enroll in multiple programs of study at one time. So they may be a concentrator in one, but they've already completed another program of study. So there is some overlap there and they do allow them to be coded either at six or seven at times. It is very specific with six and seven, though, when they're coded as a concentrator completer. In order to be coded that way, they not only have to complete the course, but they also have to have passed the course and gain that credit for it. Whereas some of the lower levels are, are just taking the course and completing it. Our next graphic here shows that we have thirteen programs of study within eight career clusters. That's what we offer at the high school. We also do have some business courses offered as well, even though that is not an official program. But we do have some students enrolled in one and then two as well. This next graphic shows the number of students, the course enrollment by those career clusters. And so we have a large number of students in our ag program, seven hundred and seventy-nine students enrolled in it. And there's always questions, well, how come there's so many there? Well, when you're looking at the courses within our ag program, it's the, they are term courses. So they just take place for half the year. So fall semester, they complete a course. Spring semester, they can complete another course. And so there's lots of opportunity for them, lots of opportunity for students to participate in that program in regards to those courses because they are only term. And the variety of what our ag teachers also teach. So they have multiple cuts going on throughout the year as well. It's not just a standard one, two, what have you. They may have three to four different classes that they're offering students at any one point in time. Health science is also a growing population for us as well. And so we have three hundred and forty-eight students this past year enrolled in, in those courses. So healthy and strong CTE program in regards to enrollment across the district.
Real quick, go back to that slide. The manufacturing one, is that welding?
That is welding.
Is that the only course we offer in manufacturing?
Yes, so we have the welding and the manufacturing, all the different, you know, from beginning welding to advanced.
Do the same.
Yes. And then transportation is the automotive string of classes.
I got a question. It's kind of surprising how your information, the technology number is lower compared to some of those others.
We, that is one of the groups that we are constantly trying to improve upon. We did have a change of instructor this year who's done a really great job of building relationships with students and he has a lot of excitement built around what he wants to do. He's very interested in the cybersecurity, also involving robotics, as well as some 3D printing. And so those are all things that he wants to look forward to adding and building upon as he goes along. And so we feel like that particular program of study is going to grow as more students get wind of the different kind of projects that he has. One of the things I can tell you, when I was in his class this year, he had a lot of student engagement in regards to the choices that students were making. So they were, they were creating apps. And so one student was very excited about history. And I think it was the Civil War or what have you. And so that student built an app all about the Civil War. And so he's done a really good job of hooking the students in based upon their, you know, their excitement and interest in things like that. So it's, it's exciting to see. We also are hoping to move forward with our tech response team. And so we're calling it the Tech Squad. And so we have a group of students, it's a small group.
Sure.
But about ten students who want to be part of that and actually help our FIC tech, you know, our, our own FIC district level team with helping with promo repairs and that type of thing. So.
Yeah, I would hope.
There's a lot going on there.
Yeah, no, I would hope with cyber security, especially with San Antonio being a major hub.
Yes.
That that's something we should be looking at.
Definitely, we're moving in the right direction in regards to that. So in this next particular slide is talking about the IVCs or industry-based certifications for this year. I do want to note that we did have a drop in two of our programs in regards to industry-based certifications, and that would be in our welding and our automotive. Specifically, though, if we look at those particular instructors, we had a big turnover with that. We had two individuals who had been in the district for longstanding time with lots of experience and had retired last year. And so we have two new staff members who were straight out of industry. This last year, they were working on getting fully certified. And so they had a lot of concentration in that, in that regard. And so in regards to our welding program, one of the instructors there plans to attend our TIVA conference this summer and gain some more experience and really hone in and focus in on those industry-based certifications and, and more specifics about everything that the students must do in order to gain, to master that in order to meet the standards industry submitted. And then in regards to our automotive, the automotive service excellence, the National Institute for Automotive Service Excellence or ASE, that's our certifying entity that we work with in regards to that. We are not, it's called an accredited institution, we're not an accredited institution with them, which I think we previously with our other instructor. And so what that means is our instructor is going to need to do some professional development with ASE over the course of the next year in order to meet their standards and become an accredited institution. So he'll get PD and understand the, the test, the, the, all of the things that the students must need in order to hopefully raise the bar and get more students certified in that realm.
And I know that was a heavy discussion during the CTA, CTE committee meeting that you had, because I was a part of that automotive welding group. One of the discussions they had.
Yes.
Are they offering summer with these type of programs or not right now?
Not right now. What they feel is maybe get another year underneath their belt and then do something. I know Coach Bada was talking about bringing that back for next summer, something very similar to what Mr. Rogers used to do with some of the middle stores coming over, even maybe an after-school program, bringing them over to gain some of that as well. And so we've had some discussions and hopefully we'll be able to bring that on next year. In regards to other certifications, you can see that we've added some additional IT certifications in computer maintenance, cybersecurity. We have more students qualify for those IVCs as well as in our floral, our floral programs in the ag plus. Something also to note in regards to IVCs, I know this is a big focus for the high school because of the CCMR accountability rating and IVCs factor into that. And so one of the things that is, one of our goals, my goals, our group's goals, our CTE goals, is that we want to really align our programs of study with additional industry-based certifications. And so, for example, in our health science, next year, we would like to also look at EKG, technician certification, as well as getting students qualified under the CCMA, which is the Certified Clinical Medical Assistant. So we will have students in the practicum for the first time this next year. And so it's the perfect time to get them ready and staged for testing under those particular IVCs. Something we talked about in regards to ag because right now, all we have is our floral, our knowledge-based and our hands-on portion for the Texas State Floral Association. We've also talked about possibly doing the OSHA thirty in regards to some of the other ag classes. And then through culinary, we talked about serve safe managers test. So those are all things that our teachers are going to be doing. Our two culinary teachers are actually going to be going through a training this summer and then getting certified themselves to be, to administer the serve safe test for next year. So moving in the right direction, we're just, we're staged, we're just not there yet. So lots of big goals ahead and hopefully next year, I'll be able to report on those things being in place. So lots of, lots of cool things going on. Our next portion is about our program pilot. So one of the things that I wanted to highlight was our health science program and we now have a memorandum of understanding with Collin Memorial Medical Center. And so our students will have an opportunity to go there. We hosted our first ever Skills USA competition and then I wanted to kind of just highlight again some of the Skills USA success that we had, although I know y'all have heard about some of those before. So the first one is our health science and emergency partnership. I have a list of the areas that our students will be able to gain observation hours in, as well as hands-on clinical experience next year. And so we have our emergency department, med search, ICU. We have the pre-op surgical area. We have, we have as well as wound care. So really neat opportunities. Each of those areas can take in about two to max three. They really want just two students at a time in each of those areas. So throughout the day next year, our practicum and our health science students will be going over there to Collin Memorial and along with. over there to Collin Memorial and along with the instructor and they will have an opportunity to go to the different areas, have a rotation in the different areas so that they can kind of see what area best fits them, what are they most excited about being part of and continuing in the health field with. So we're excited about that. This past February, we did host our first ever welding competition there at the high school. We had eight schools participate and sixty students in total. And what the, we had great feedback from all the campuses that participated and our campus team would like to host it again next year. So we have great facilities and we want to show them off and we want others to see that. With that being said, these are students that you honored previously, but I don't think we have all of the results by the time we had that board meeting. So I'm pleased to share with you that we had several state finalists, opening and closing ceremony within the top six at state. And our occupational health and safety was in second place at state. And there's some pictures of those teams there. The next slide actually shows some other teams that competed as well and did very well even though they didn't qualify in one of those top places within state. But good representation for Florisville. Good showing there to get our name out there about we have some great programs, great things going on here. Health science was another of those and I know these students were here previously and they were recognized for, for that as well. But we wanted to share with you some of the pictures of the kids in action throughout the year and some of the activities that they did. So you'll see some of those pictures of hands-on activities that they did, working on each other or a mannequin learning CPR. They had some guest speakers. They were learning about the anatomy of the body and different, different methods for also wound care and dealing with wounds. So just neat hands-on experiences for them. And one thing that we are planning on doing with health science is really working towards building our clinic, our campus clinic, to where kids can get more hands-on experience prior to going over to the hospital or clinical settings and that sort of thing. So we were able to add, we got one hospital bed prior to, I think, earlier in the school year and since then, we've been able to get two more hospital beds. We have a mannequin. We need some training for that, the teachers to utilize that mannequin because it is very high-tech to the point where you can program it to have different parades or different symptoms and things like that. And the kids have to work to find a, you know, what the cause of the issue is. And so, but our teachers, we got, we have the mannequin in house. Now we need some training to make sure that we do not mess up the mannequin. And they're a little hesitant with that because they don't, they know it's a costly item, very costly. So, but we're excited about having all of those things. We had great success in regards to FFA. I know y'all probably had bulletins and saw Facebook and I know we had different groups here as well, but our, in the fall, we had leadership development events where FFA broadcasting, agricultural advocacy, and public relations all made it up to the state finals. So really excited about those teams. And then the next slide shows the spring, teams which were on the career development event and we had a great showing with those as well within the state contests. So agriculture, livestock, ag tech, the quality, as well as nursery landscape. So so many positives this year in regards to CTE, so many successes of our students. The last slide is just of our stock show, successes, just a few of them because I could probably fill many more pages of different pictures of our kids going out, competing, and doing well. So very proud of our CTE team, very proud of our, our, our teachers for going above and beyond to work with our students. And I feel like we have a lot of audacious goals ahead of us and we're working towards those. So I have a great team of educators working with us. Any questions?
Cool.
Great job. Thank you.
Keep it up.
Next item is item number five, action items. And the first action item is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or discussions concerning the consent agenda?
One item that is included in the consent agenda is an amendment to our contract for food service. This was sent out on RFP and the contract was approved last year and it is renewable up to four years. The only adjustment is based on the consumer price index. And so they, there is a language in the contract which is, comes from the state, Texas Department of Agriculture. With that language being there, so there is an adjustment based on the consumer price index.
Are there any questions, discussions? All right.
Mr. President, I move to accept the consent agenda.
Okay, Ms. Martinez. Motion, and Ms. Reed makes the second. Any other questions? All those on paper, let me know by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next action item is to consider approval of employee retention and appreciation stipend, Ms. Engel.
Good evening, Board. Dr. O, Dr. Gilstrap. Tonight I have a exciting opportunity for you guys to discuss with y'all an employee retention and appreciation stipend to be paid on the June twentieth paycheck. As you know, TEA granted a target percentage attendance rate or taper adjustment to the districts for the first four, six weeks for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year on March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two. Well into our school year. Due to this adjustment in the tenant rate, the district received more funding than it would have should the TEA not have stuck in to make the adjustment due to the COVID absences. The district's actual refined ADA for the first four, six weeks was eighty-nine point ninety-six percent. With the TEA's adjustment, the district's ADA for the first four, six weeks was adjusted up to ninety-four point eighty-seven percent. The district was conservative in spending throughout the year due to the lower ADA than was expected. As we now have excess funds due to adjustment, administration feels that we should pass along those funds to our district staff for their hard work and dedication during another difficult year in the form of a five hundred dollar retention, retention and appreciation stipend to be paid on the June twentieth, twenty-twenty-two paycheck for all full-time employees continuously employed from November fifth, twenty-twenty-one through May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Long-term substitutes who worked a total of ninety or more days during the school year will receive an, or be eligible for a hundred dollar retention and appreciation stipend. Total cost to the district for this stipend will be three hundred thou, three hundred, yes, thousand dollars. Are there any questions?
For staff that have resigned, but their resignation date was the twenty-seventh?
They were employed through the twenty-seventh.
So they will...
Yeah, no worries.
Again, this is local funds, so therefore the, the board is, does need to take action prior retention and send a stipend for given out, out of ESRA funds. So it was a different fund.
So we're, I mean, we're good with that. We don't need to use it anywhere else.
No, I mean, obviously there are other areas, but we also feel that we need to take this as an opportunity to, to recognize that staff for what they're doing.
Definitely stressed.
And it's also short-term, you know, they didn't make the adjustment till the end of March when we're already in timelines, getting things.
Also doing the catch-up too.
And this is completely separate from budget discussions on increases, salary increases for the upcoming school year.
Correct. This is out of this budget, that's why we want to get it done in June.
And it's also not TRS eligible, so it doesn't affect their TRS amount. This is just separate.
Yeah, this, this will come out of the twenty-two budget. We're still working on the twenty-three budget, which you know, that, that will operate.
If there are no other questions, administration recommends the board approve the employee retention and appreciation stipend as presented.
I move to accept the administration's recommendation.
A second.
Mr. Shadlock, and then any other discussion, questions? All on paper, let me know by raising your hand. There's no one opposed, so motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next action item is to consider approval of local policy updates.
So Dr. Wade is, is not here today. She is taking the day off, so you'll get to listen to me talk a little bit about the local policy update. But we do have a group of policies that are listed in the board packet. These are based on the DOI or the District of Innovation Plan. So there is a requirement for us to modify our local policies based on that new, new DOI. And so that's what these are. There is one additional that has been included and it is based on the T-test evaluation process, which is policy D and A local. What this does is instead of a teacher being appraised on the T-test, they will be eligible, if they meet certain criteria, to be approved or be appraised every other year. During their quote off-year, they would still have to put together goals, they would still have to meet with their appraiser or their administrator that's appraising them, and they would have some additional walkthroughs that would be performed. If there was ever an issue or concern expressed by the teacher or the appraiser in some of those walkthroughs, then we can always move back to the T-test appraisal process in the middle of the year. But I think this is much needed. It's a, obviously the, those appraisals can be stressful for the teachers as well as the administrators and just the number that the administrator has to do, as well as for the teacher. I do feel like if they meet those criteria, which means they've had consistent, successful appraisals over a period of time in the same content area, so we feel like that we can give them that reprieve for a year and still, still be in their classroom, still observing them, but it just gives them that reprieve and we're able to focus on ones that we need to focus on. If there's no questions, the administration recommends the board approve the revisions to local policy impacted by the District Innovation Plan and D and A local as presented.
Motion?
I move to accept the administration's recommendation.
Okay, Ms. Martinez, Ms. Verlenga, seconded. Any further questions or discussion? All on paper, let me know by raising your hand. The board will now convene in executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five-five-one, one-zero-seven-six, deliberation regarding security devices or security audits at seven-thirty-one, seven-thirty-two. So time is eight forty-two. Close session is over and the board will reconvene and open session at eight forty-three.
All right. And board members, I do not have any recommendations for action at this time.
All right. We have now concluded our agenda for this meeting. Is there any further business? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned at eight forty-three.
All right. Cool.